For the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me for a moment of silence.
Thank you, you can be seated. First up is the approval of the agenda, and there's one. One thing I need to change on here, amend. Daniel Priestley's item number thirteen, he's asked that to be removed from today's agenda, so. I will make that amend to remove item number thirteen. From Planning and Zoning Director Daniel Priestley, so with that, I will move the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. The consent agenda, items three through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered. By one motion, items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Number three is approval of the minutes from the February eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Number four is approval of claims. Number five from Community Action Agency, Jean Logan, is approval appointment of BB Jerran and Darryl Bullock to the Community Action Agency. Of Suleam Board of Directors for a three-year term beginning April first, two thousand twenty-five. Number six from Deputy Commissioner of Elections Steve Hoffmeyer is to receive the appointment of Hannah Rinders. To the WIT Director District Three. Number seven from Human Resources Melissa Thomas, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. The authorization to initiate hiring process and to approve or to overlap employee and budgeted positions in the sheriff's office. Number eight from County Treasurer Tina Bertrand. It's the approval of property tax refund on parcel ending in seven, zero, two, three, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Approval of property tax refund on parcel ending in eight, zero, zero, two, in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Approval of property tax refund on parcel ending in nine, zero, two, four, in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and two dollars. It's the approval of resolution for the payment of taxes for JT, Lake Forest, MHC LLC, and for Evergreen Village. And then number nine from Deputy County Recorder Diane Swarbada Peterson is to receive Recorder's Office Third Quarter Financial Report. And that is the end of the consent agenda, any questions, comments? Alright, I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Alright, on to the regular agenda item. First is from Civil Service Commission Charlie Hertz with our Civil Service Annual Report.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to appear before you. Just real briefly. I have been selected as the Chair. At the commission, I've been in it for three years now. And I am assisted by a couple of new members, one old member, one new, they're both old but. We have Buck Trout. Mr. Trout is a former US Marshal, he's done thirty-one years of service. He has been here for twenty years and then went to Omaha. And he is currently retired. Now we have, everybody probably knows Glenn Parrott, Glenn Parrott's former sheriff of Woodbury County. And we'll have Buck come up and deliver the report.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening. Charlie asked me if I would present this to you folks, it's the annual report from the Civil Service Commission. I don't know, did he give you folks copies or you can read along, if not.
Yes, sir, you have copies to pass out to everyone?
He did have some.
We can receive that, yeah.
I'd move to receive.
Second, motion by Nelson, second by Bittenger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, under section A there, we had the number of applicant tests that were requested for new hires, we had thirteen. We had a number of five actual tests that were administered to new hires, four laterals. And four tested elsewhere and provided certifications to the scores and posted. Under section C, the number of promotional tests requested for each civil service rank. Under lieutenant, we didn't have any, but under sergeant, we had five. And under section D, the number of tests administered for each rank, same numbers, zero for lieutenant, of course, and five for the sergeants. We had number of lateral transfers from other agencies requested, that number is four. The number of grievances filed for allegation violations of the civil service protections and type and resolutions, we didn't have any. And the final, section G, number of informal queries conducted of personnel to ensure compliance with the rules. Regulations of the commission and the sheriff's office policies and the Woodbury County Civil Service Commission. We just had one, and we'd like to thank Mr. Widman for helping us revamp our rules, he helped us out with that and we got them all. Revamped so that they're a little more understandable for the employees and the civil service people, so. Other than that, that's all I have on the report for the annual. It's nice meeting everybody for the first time, I haven't had a chance to meet most, if not all of you, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming for that update. Any questions from the board or anything? Okay, alright, on item eleven, from the Compensation Board, Daniel Lind, is to receive Compensation Board Compensation Schedule and Recommendation. Alright, I will move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. So we did meet as a Compensation Board at five thirty PM on February sixth, up in the boardroom in the main floor. And we came to the recommended salaries for Treasurer, four percent, Sheriff, five percent. Auditor, four percent, plus a one-time five thousand dollar stipend. County Attorney, eight point five percent, and Supervisors, four percent. Now I do have noted here that per Iowa Code, section three-three-one-point-nine-zero-seven-one. Was amended on July first, two thousand twenty-four to add the requirement that Compensation Boards provide information on how we got that. So in previous years, we definitely have done this before, this year, we did document it though. We did use the ISAC as well as the Bureau of Labor and Statistics for inflationary data. And that's referenced here in the paragraph. In regards to the Auditor's representative shared data, we did look at Nebraska and South Dakota on that as well. And in the lack of a Budget Director at the time, we did decide about a five thousand dollar stipend. And that's anywhere from five hundred to seventy-five hundred dollars if there's not a Budget Director for Auditor. Also, Woodbury County ranks seventh in population and our county attorney salary is at tenth, thus the increase in that. And something that does come up every year that we definitely talked about quite a bit was the Board of Supervisors' salary. Being the seventh largest county in Iowa, Woodbury County, but the Board Member's salary is ranked as thirty-seventh, so. We definitely took that into consideration and had discussion around that as well. I know many previous years, that was kicked down the road quite a bit. And so we wanted to ensure that there was a fair compensation in regards to that, so there was interest in people like yourselves serving on the board. So, that's what I have for that. Then the Sheriff, when it came to that, we definitely had to look at the legislative criteria for the Back the Blue Law. So that's something that is going to continue throughout the years because of that legislation. And based upon that, we do have to take a look at the Police Chief Salary in the locality. Which we did look at that as well from the Sioux City Police Chief. And thus that recommendation, in previous years, it was quite a bit more significant, but this year, we were at five percent in regards to the Sheriff. And that put him pretty close to what the Chief of Police is.
First of all, we'll say thank you in the board for your work.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yeah, for doing that and doing it with due diligence and with that, any questions from the board or anything? For Dan, if anything?
Yeah, I did, I did give your Chair of the Commission a call, Mr. Bob Stewart, because I had a question about that five thousand dollar stipend, if it was a one-time or ongoing thing. It is a one-time thing. That led me to ask, is the stipend for the Chair a one-time thing? And the answer was basically, you guys haven't looked at that specifically.
That's correct.
Because of that, it's continued to grow by a percentage over the years, and so this five thousand. We intend for this to be a one-time deal because of the increased duties, but not to increase and increase and increase and increase. And so, I did ask the Chair of your Compensation Commission a question on that, because this is the first year that. We can really, with this new law, make changes individually to different offices. And I think that when I came on originally, the Chair, the stipend for the Chair was much less. And it's getting to a point where, if you look at the salary survey that you use for your comparables for the. For the Supervisors themselves, it does list the Chair's stipends across the state. And Woodbury County is number one in the state of Iowa, over ninety-nine counties, we're at seven thousand nine hundred ninety-eight, pretty much eight thousand dollars. The next after us is Washington County, which is twenty-seventh in population, at three thousand five hundred dollars. And then it goes twenty-five hundred, two thousand, fifteen hundred. And a lot of counties don't, including our neighbors Sioux and Plymouth County. And I just bring it up because I think this is a year that the legislature's given us a chance to address this when. It's been interpreted one way by the Com Board over the years, that this is a stipend that continues to grow. I don't think that should be the case, and I also think that it's getting a little harder for me to justify when we have the ability to make adjustments to that. That we are number one in the state, so I just wanted to bring that up because it wouldn't be brought up otherwise.
And Supervisor Ung, we did not break that out, when we took a look at the Board of Supervisor salaries, we did not differentiate. Between the Chairperson and the Supervisors, to be clear on that. But you make a good point, thank you.
I think it's a good point to look at that, thank Matthew for bringing that up, I think we should look at that, address that, yeah. Okay, any other comments? Alright, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Appreciate it.
Alright, item number twelve from Board of Supervisors, Mark Nelson. A's Approval to Separate Consideration of Board Supervisors' Pay from Other Elected Officials, so Mark, I'll turn it over to you for. Item A.
Yeah, heeding Dan's comments about the Com Board, and I appreciate all your work, but we're in a tough. We're in a tough budget year and there's kind of a lot of unknowns, you know, Auditor Scaff has worked very hard for months. You know, not only in her role, but to try to cover for Dennis Butler and then being gone. And we've got new rules and stipulations that we're dealing with, that's made this process very hard for us, and so. The Board of Supervisors, in order to not give themselves a pay raise, we have to separate ourselves out from the Compensation Board's recommendation. And so, my item is twofold, one, if the Board were approved to separate that out, then we could. Reduce our own salary based off of what the Compensation Board has recommended. And personally, I would like to see us have a zero percent increase in our pay. And then we can use that money to fund other services within the budget for this year. Especially given that, like I said, it's a very trying budget process this year, and so. Best way to lead is by example, and so I just wanted to put this on the agenda for consideration.
I'll move to separate it out, hold a second.
Okay, with that, we can have some discussions, so, any discussion on this item? Comments, yeah, go ahead.
Who was the second, I didn't hear, very good, thank you.
Motion by Dietrich, second by Carr, yeah?
So every year is different. For this particular year, one way I could support this is if the Board had a consensus to do the same for all elected officials. And I don't think that's what the Board is going to decide, but that is one way I could support this, because. I don't think this is necessarily a data-driven initiative, I think that it does. I'll just, I'm just gonna ramble on if I, you know, this happens every year. So, this is a question of optics for ourselves, and that word was used by Mr. Nelson appropriately, because we have budget for ourselves. But I prefer to look at it as a position instead of me. And I think that when we separate, when we go to zero, this isn't making it about ourselves. And I'd rather bring in, if we're gonna make a motion to save some money for the budget. Let's make it a little meaningful instead of just on the lowest-paid elected officials.
And I appreciate that, and I understand what you're saying, and I would be open to reducing other elected officials' pay as well.
Okay, any other further discussion? Alright. Yeah, that's fine, since we're just having, that's fine, Dan, I don't mind.
So, thank you very much for letting me speak on this, so in regards to that, just keep in mind that. About two years ago, we had to really increase the salary in regards to the Board of Supervisors, because it kept getting kicked down the river. I'm a taxpayer myself, so, I live here in Woodbury County, and you know, that's definitely something to consider as you continue to look at that. If you keep going down to zero, eventually, another Board is going to have to take a look at that, and it is position-based. And we want to have the best people that are up here, you guys are great. But we want to make sure that the best people are using their time wisely, getting into this and serving as the Board for us, as Woodbury County citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be honest, Dan, you're just saying that because we pay you to say that, right? That we're great. That's a joke because you don't get paid, so.
That's right, this is a preposition.
So we have a motion and a second. So let's vote, and then we can talk about item B on there, yeah, so, alright, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, all opposed say nay.
Nay.
Alright, motion passes four zero. Yeah, fuck me, four to one, excuse me, I apologize. Four to one, on that, item B is the Approval to Reduce Supervisor's Salaries to a Zero Percent Increase for Fiscal Year Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six. Good, Mark?
Yeah, so this is just the second part of that, the, obviously, the Compensation Board recommended a four percent pay increase for the Board of Supervisors. I think looking through the budget earlier this afternoon, it was somewhere shy of nine thousand dollars in actual pay, and then you have benefits on top of that. So it's not a large amount, but again, I would like to see that go to services in the county. And so this is just a motion and vote would be to reduce it to zero and keep us at the same threshold this coming year as what we had this year.
Okay, alright. So with that, is there, I don't know if there's a motion to move that or a second for discussion? Anybody's gonna move that?
I'll move it.
I would second that, so motion by Dietrich, second by Bittenger, now, we can discuss it, so yeah, let's discuss that, so. Look, I'll go, I do agree, I agree that it is a tight budget year, and I know we are very. Very blessed to be in this position and be able to lead and serve, and I, you know. And I think, I do agree though with Matthew, sometimes we have to look at it as a position. And Dan, we had talked about earlier, looking at it as a position and not just as an optic. And so I could support zero percent, but also I would, I could say I would support, if we wanted to, I would. Could support like a one percent increase or one and a half percent, just something that's lower than everyone else, that would keep. Keep adjusting for, because you are, I do agree, we want to get the best people in this position. And I have heard that from some businessmen here in Sioux City that, you know, they're like, oh, just if it was a little higher pay, I might take it, you know, might come out of maybe retirement and work and do this, but it's just. May not be worth the while to them, so I can see both sides of the issue of, it is a tight budget year, we want to lead by example, but also it is position-based, so. That's my thought, maybe, you know, on that, so I would. I would, I would make him, I wouldn't, well, let me stop there, let me stop the discussion, let me have the discussion first before I. Do you have a discussion? Okay.
Obviously, yeah, making it, you know, position-based, I mean, I appreciate everything, Dan, and that the Board did, Compensation Board, but. I don't know, yeah, making it by the position to get the best people, you know, I get all that, but I also see in the numbers that we're gonna have for. You know, the year, and I, and I guess, Al, I would support too, as Matthew said, I mean. Are we gonna look at the other elected officials' salaries as well, but are there increases? I guess right now, we're just talking about ours, so. I think, you know, just looking at the budget for the year, I'm gonna support the zero.
I can support this if an amendment to the motion is received. I will move to amend the motion to include setting the Chair's stipend at three thousand five hundred dollars. That would still make Woodbury County number one among the ninety-nine counties. With the understanding this is a set amount, that just like the Auditor's stipend does not grow every year.
I would, I appreciate that, and I, like I said earlier, I think I want to look at all the, you know, elected officials as we go through this, and so I would. I would be supportive of that amendment.
I agree, I. We are compensated fairly, and so I mean, I think I'd be fine to that. I think it's been addressed before, Supervisors talked about that, what is, what should be the stipend of the Chair? So, so this, I think this is the season to address up the new law and everything going on, so.
So we vote on the amendment first?
Yeah, let's vote on the amendment, yeah, so, we'll vote on the amendment for that, so all in favor of that amendment?
We need a second.
Oh, second that.
He did.
So, I'll second that officially.
I guess, can I have a little discussion on that, I mean, I just feel, so we're gonna set the stipend for the Chair at thirty-five hundred. I guess I, you know, and I need to get out on the ISAC website and look, but with the eight thousand that it is currently, basically, is it. Put it more in line with what, how in line with it, is that this Chairperson's salary with other counties similar size? Or does the thirty-five hundred bring it back more into line?
So number two is Washington County thirty-five hundred, number three is Jasper at twenty-five hundred. Lee, twenty-five hundred, Muscatine, twenty-five hundred, Allen McKee, two thousand, Hamilton, two thousand, Buena Vista, fifteen hundred. Marion, fifteen hundred, and so on, you don't find a county that has a larger population than us until you get down to.
So with our total salary though, and the stipend, where does it bring us into line with the Chair's position?
Well, it would be the Supervisor rate plus three thousand five hundred.
And I guess that's where, kind of where I'm wondering where that puts us in line with other counties of similar population, just for the Chair, because they do more, obviously, and. My thought is, at least for the Chair, maybe, I don't know. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, I guess I'd be in support of it being more, but, you know, we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we can always, you know, every year, look at that or read just later, talk about that, that's. I think it is gonna be tight budget year, and I think everything we can do to proactively save money here and there. I'm not against it, so. Okay, alright, so motion by Ung, second by Nelson, any other discussion for that amendment, alright, all in favor say aye. Ken, did you say aye or no?
I did.
Okay, good, alright, motion passes five zero. Thank you, alright, so that passes there, okay. Yeah, back on the discussion of, yeah, of item B, yep. Do you have any further, no, anything else? Alright, so Michelle, can you read out that amended motion for us?
So I have a motion to take the Supervisor pay increase to zero percent. And amend the Chair stipend to three thousand five hundred. Passed five zero.
Alright, so that is now what we're considering on the main motion, so any other further discussion on that? Okay, alright, alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, alright, motion passes five zero. On that.
I have a quick question.
Oh, sure, come on, Melissa, come on up, yeah.
So when is that new stipend, when does that start? Is it immediately, or would that be July first? For the Chair?
Would have to be July first.
This is Compensation Board reference to July first.
Okay, well, it was, you know, they didn't really reference the Chairman, so I was just making sure.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, no, good question, good clarification. Alright, number thirteen was removed from our agenda, it's from Planning and Zoning, so now we're on to number fourteen from Deputy County Recorder.
Okay, so, I have two items for you here, the first is to authorize. The Chair to sign the canvas sheets for the Monona County Drainage Election. And this is, and this is an occurrence that's a routine item. And this would be three drainage ditches that we share with Monona County, and then we submit these to Monona County.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Ung, second by Dietrich, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
Okay, the second item is a renewal of our online index book system. This is a system we've had in place since two thousand thirteen, and it makes access to the recorded documents a lot. Easier and transparent to the public, this is just a renewal, the cost has increased a little bit, and that is included in our Recorder's budget. And so just request for signature and approval of renewing the contract with Cot Systems. So this system allows us to search electronically back to nineteen twenty, and it's just an excellent resource to give public information that they can. You know, search and not have to come to the office to get documents.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, alright, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor say aye. Motion passes five zero. Alright, thank you, Michelle. Next up is from Building Services Kenny Smits, the Approval of Two Thousand Twenty-Five CIP Project Courthouse Clerks Northwest Office in the amount of seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Alright, Kenny, go ahead.
Yeah, this agenda item is for the courthouse clerks area on the main floor upstairs. They've been experiencing some, it's a talcum powder-like substance that falls from the ceiling, it's actually salts coming from the plaster. This happens when plaster gets moisture in it or too much humidity. There's aggregate in that plaster when it's made, and that aggregate is salts, and those salts release, and then they form on the surface of the paint. If they get humid, when they do that, they originally, they eventually flake off and fall. With the demolition we've got across the street, it's exasperated the situation, if you want to call it that. We've been dealing with this probably ongoing just, probably about a year, but it's gotten continually worse. So we'd like to move ahead with this project, we do know that we've got some. Done some digging and ripping out to get into some walls above the crawl space and the ceiling in that area. So we know we have some leaking steam pipes, some possible leaking condensate pipes. And probably some domestic water lines that aren't insulated that could be building up some water on them, causing, all causing. that could be building up some water on them, causing, all causing that issue to occur. We probably are going to have to, I'm certain that some of these older pipes may have some asbestos encapsulation on them, which would probably be, have to be removed. The workers that eventually would do this project are not going to be able to make all these repairs from above the ceiling, they're going to have to cut into the ceiling and make either access panels or just openings, and then repair the ceiling. Once the work is completed, we'll have to go back in, finish out the ceiling, and then remove all the, all the salts that are on the current ceiling, reprime and repaint that ceiling. We're probably, there's no probably, we are going to have to relocate, unfortunately, the clerk's, clerk's office when we do this. I don't know a timeline yet or what that looks like. We're still working on that phase and trying to get the necessary parties and quotes put together to make this move forward. But for today, we're requesting consideration or approval of CIP funds in the amount of $78,833. Any questions I might be able to answer for anyone?
All right, questions? I would, I would move it.
I'll second that. Have you, I know you had one person that you retired, you were going to fill that position, then we created that new position. Are you got a pool of applicants that you're going to be able to hire back that can maybe help with this project in a timely manner, or are you sitting there?
Um, we have, we have hired one person, he hasn't started yet.
Okay.
We still have another position open in the, in the maintenance tech area.
All right, any other questions, discussion? All right, motion by Benjers, second by Nelson, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, motion passes five, zero. Next up from County Treasurer, Tina Bertrand, it's approval of bond council for fiscal year 25 capital improvement note. And Tina, turn it over to you.
Good evening, Tina Bertrand, Woodbury County Treasurer. So, this is the FY 25 capital improvement loan that we've been talking about over the last couple of months. Historically, this is something that Dennis probably led. My participation in it was to collect or try to bid out the interest rates for the loan. So, what we're presenting tonight is, one, will be the approval for the bond council, the engagement letter, Allern Coonies, they are the ones that have, have historically provided those bond council services for us. Having read through the contract, it is virtually identical to her years past, and so the request would be to accept and approve the contract as submitted.
I'll move it.
I'll second. Motion by Nelson, second by Carper, any further discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay, motion passes five, zero on the item B for the approval resolution to fix the March 4th, 2025 at 4:40 PM, so, go ahead, Tina, I'll let you make comments or give me over. So, it's for a meeting to authorize a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed 700,000 general obligation capital loan notes, so, that's what that is.
Okay, so this item is to fix the public hearing, to actually present to the community what the, what project, basically what the projects are, how much it's costing, what the loan's going to be about, so this is, so this item is to fix that res, to fix that public meeting for March 4th, and we have, it, it also includes the, it'll, it'll also include like the notification and everything that'll be submitted, it'll, they'll have to be presented to the publications this week so that we can get it published at least once before the hearing.
And on this, we've, Tina and Michelle and Kenny, we've met together, met with them, and been working on this, so that the board's aware and the public aware, you guys have done great to work together to get all this together, and so.
And one, one thing I should probably say, we broke them up into two different items, and one of it is, is because after the review from the bond council, the projects that we submitted, the demolition of the LEC is slightly different in terms of, it, it all qualifies, but it's just different in terms of how they have to present it to the board or to the community. So, basically, the $700,000 are the remaining projects that we had, that the board had approved for the CIP, for the FY 25 CIP, so that's a lot of computer programming stuff. There's some tuck pointing and stuff at the EMS building and things like that. So, that's the really, the reason for having the two different motions.
Sure. All right, any further board discussion on that, questions for Tina or us? All right, I'll move it.
Second.
All right, motion by Benjers, second by Nelson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes five, zero. Item C is the approval resolution to fix March 4th, 2025 at 4:45 PM for a meeting to authorize a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed 500,000 general obligation capital loan notes. Once again, it's the same, Tina just explained the same thing, just got to break it out in two different meetings.
Yep, this is just the LEC demolition portion.
Yep.
And we just, by law, we're required to se, to separate them, and so we have two separate public hearings.
I'll move it.
Second. Motion by Nelson, second by Benjers, all right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I want to say thank you to our honor treasurer and building services director Kenny and his staff. Thank you, guys, for working together to get this capital loan improvement project going, and so, and Ryan, we are grateful that you're here. All right, with that, is number 17, board supervisors, Matthew Ung, it's the approval of salary increase for the juvenile detention director position, so, go ahead, Matthew.
Thank you. I'm proposing today a salary increase of at least 10% for the juvenile detention director effective today. For point of reference, Potawatomi County's juvenile detention director is at 107,000, and currently, we have this position at 89,838. Typically, when the board makes adjustments to department heads, it's, it's a complaint-driven process. We get told publicly, this is a big deal, this is something that needs to be addressed, we really want this. Every so often, it's nice to do it just because it's the right thing to do, and I think that's true in this case. This position may be the only one that has not received a salary adjustment since 2017 among department heads, which is when Ryan Weber became the director. This position also is responsible for growing responsibilities in the juvenile detention center. We've heard in the news about the 17-year-old on the murder suspect. Those sort of cases go not to the jail, but to juvenile detention, and the regulations that Mr. Weber has had to deal with throughout COVID, and to the current day with changing laws is extreme. The different ways that we would classify and separate inmates if they're 18-years-old do not, do not occur for 17-year-olds. You're dealing with basically timeouts for a certain period of minutes, and not much separation when there's a violent suspect in, in the same space as, as someone who's certainly not. And so, I think not only has the director done an excellent job maintaining order and, and such, but he's also proactively brought in revenue to the county through, as we discussed in the budget hearing portion today, those sort of things are under his purview, under that position's purview, and has served the county well over the many years, and again, I think it's the only department position that hasn't had a substantial bump to deal with the record-high inflation that we've been through in the last couple of years, so, my motion as proposed is for, is for 10%, but I would support anything if the board wanted to go higher than that, to get to, closer to the next probably comparable level I referenced, but I do know that it's a, that it's still a substantial jump, and so, this isn't maybe something that the board can address right here, right now, completely, but I do think it's a meaningful step, and so that's why it's on the agenda. So, I'll open it up to any discussion.
I'm supportive of this item. In my short two years on the board, I've probably interacted almost the least with Ryan and his department, and that's not because I've wanted, not wanted to, they just, they're self-sufficient. He, he runs that thing with a tight ship, they just, they don't need much, and so I, it's unfortunate that we let this lag behind as much as we did, but I think that this would be a great first step to catching him up, I think it's very well-deserved. Appreciate all that you do, and I would absolutely support this.
Right, yeah, I'd echo both your settlements, yeah, coming over multiple times, Ryan being over there and hearing some of the stuff your staff are going through, and so I appreciate that, yeah, I think you run your ship very well, and you care for the students, which is, which really, I think, comes through, how you care for your staff, and you want to, even though they're there in some really bad situations, you do want to see them make better choices, and I cared for Diddy and he, so, I would be, I'd be supportive of this, yeah, at the 10%. Any, any other kind of you guys have?
No, I, I guess, haven't had an increase since 2017, that's a long time, so I support this too, and I'd like to someday come over and see your facility too, so.
All right.
Well, it, it seems from the board discussion that 10% is where, is where we are at, is the consensus?
Yeah, I, I think let's take this first step, yeah, and let's keep reviewing it and let's look at it, yeah.
Okay, well, again, I was involved when, when you were hired, Ryan, I know you took over during extraordinarily difficult circumstances, and you've really turned, turned things around, so, I'm glad that, glad that you're with us, glad that you'll continue to be with us, and I won't forget about this come future years as well, so, I'll make the motion to approve a 10% salary increase for the juvenile detention director position effective February 18th.
Second.
All right, motion by Ung, second by Nelson, get some feedback there, all right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion passes five, zero. Thank you, Matthew, for bringing that up. All right, with that, we'll go on. Nelson, Ryan, you want to say anything, or are you good? Okay, since you're here, join us for this wonderful meeting here.
Like we said, he's low-key, low drama.
That's true, that is true.
He doesn't even say, "I want more, give me more," he doesn't come up here and say, "I want more." Now that you passed it, I want more.
True.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, I will say, you probably, you have one of the cooler offices in the, in the county, yeah, you've ever been in the county, been in his office, pretty cool, yeah, yeah, all right. With that, number 18, reports on committee meetings for many members of the, reports on committee meetings. I have, I have none. Do you have any, Kent?
Um.
If not, sorry.
Mr. Nelson and I were at a conservation meeting, and we were discussing, I guess there was a ramp that needed some construction, I think the river was kind of undermining that ramp, and also looking at putting some asphalt in the park, I believe it was 1.8 miles in distance, and I think the last time it was coded was in 1997, and possibly looking at that, but I think there's going to be some work done in Anthem on D-38 around that time, so, it was just something that came up during that discussion, so.
All right, any others? Okay, do you have something?
Uh, so, yeah, so, thanks, Kent, for the update on Conservation Board on Thursday, had Soil/Water Conservation Board meeting this morning. They've had more staff turnover with their office managers leaving, so they're, they, they still have these issues, and I think that's relevant because they, during our budget hearing two weeks ago, they talked about extra funding for some of their staff, and I believe Supervisor Ung asked Chairman Jason Yaki what they had in reserves, and I think he reported 300,000, and we got that number today, and it's 438,000, and so, where that money comes from is that board builds water containment structures, so dams, cement spillways, some of these operate in conjunction with secondary roads and some of our roadways, and this money is, is funded by either state or federal funding, but then they enter into an agreement with the landowner, and the landowner has to put up money in advance when they do the project, and then that money goes into an account, and then this board invests that money, and then that's the money that they use to do any sort of repairs on any of these structures. And so, I asked how many structures we have in the county and what a value would be, and we have 400 pretty much semi-permanent or very permanent structures, and the value on that would be 30 to 40 million dollars.
Wow.
So, that's why, so several years ago, when they came to the board of supervisors asking for help, they were paying for that technician that goes out there and is doing the maintenance on these structures, they asked for some help because they were in some financial lean times, and that's why they've come back and asked for a little bit more. Whatever they don't pay out of that maintenance fund for that staff, that person, is less work that they can do on their, on their structures, and they're limited to that account and the interest that they earn, and so they can't fix every damaged item every year, they have to prioritize, but I wanted to report back what that balance was, where that money came from, and, and what it's used for in, in that regard, and so, obviously, they're, they're hoping for some help on that person. One of the things they brought up again is that there is a, a special levy that the, the state requires in code that only allows, it's a six cents per thousand, and it can only be assessed on agricultural land, and it can only be used for these types of structures and for people to work on them, and so, if it's somewhat of a hindrance out of real basic or local option or whatever, they encourage us to look at that as a, as an alternative. They had, you know, definitely understand the constraints of, of 718, but I wanted to at least report back because I think all of us had some pretty significant questions about their funding and, and that sort of thing, so I just wanted to report that back to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
At a WCICC meeting, we discussed some of the efficiencies at the budget hearing today, but they were showing some pictures of the repurposing they did of the legacy data center to office space, removing old floors, heavy tiles. It's really, it's really good what they've been able to do with the, all the space they have. We, we live in a historic building, and so anytime you see a department really step up and really help respect that fact and what we have to deal with is, is really helpful, so, I always appreciate that city-county collaboration. We have budgeted every year, and it's, it's still working out, just great.
All right, all right, on to that, we'll move on to citizen concerns, any citizen concerns? If any, come on forward. Like a motion to receive?
Motion to receive.
All right, motion by Benjers, second by Nelson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, all right, motion passes five, zero.
Hi, my name is Robyn Shiro. I live at 311 East Washington in Elk Point. First, I want to say how much I appreciate all that you do, since I was a previous county commissioner myself, but I wanted to make you aware today of some of the crimes that are occurring in your communities. I tried to turn these criminals, terrorists, into the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office at least three times now, but he never returned my messages that I left him with his front office staff, even when one of them included turning in the murders of the 33-year Union County Sheriff, Dan LaMose. Therefore, I'm turning in a document describing these crimes to you with hopes that the Woodbury County Sheriff will respond, since as I understand it, the Woodbury County Sheriff's budget is approved by the Woodbury County Board of Supervisors. These terrorists who breached homeland security have also committed human trafficking, racketeering, murder, kidnapping, torture, rape, grand larceny, forgery, fraud, and many other crimes in our area. Again, thank you for your time and consideration, but most of all, thank you for all that you do for Woodbury County, Iowa.
All right, thank you. Any other?
Mr. Chair, I have a concern that I'd just like to bring up during citizen concerns.
Oh, sure.
So, in the recorder's office, and this is related to kind of what's going on in the clerk's office with the ceiling damage, we have an area that stores books, there's three large rows. three large rows of recorded documents, and the ceiling has leaked up there several times. I believe one time it was sewage, and most recently, I believe it was related to the steam pipes, and when I, it was brought to me, my attention just within the last couple of weeks, and I went up and looked at it, and there's actually some sort of a corrosive that has leaked onto the shelving, and Kenny, I'm not sure if you saw it, but I know your staff was up there cleaning it up. My concern is that we have, you know, vital documents up there as far as the recorded documents, it's three rows of, very large rows of Florida ceiling-recorded large books, and I would like to find another place to house them. We looked around the courthouse a little bit, and I'm really not sure where that space would be. If you've been in the recorder's office, the space is maximized, I mean, our, our documents are growing, you know, we're not getting any smaller, so it's just a concern that I wanted you to be aware of, that we really do need to find a safe location to house those historical records.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Michelle, Steve Holden told me that there was some leakage up there. I'm, I'm under the understanding that's been repaired. I can't say it won't happen again, it's happened at least twice before, to my knowledge. That said, I don't know, again, where the space would be that we would put in the courthouse. I understand you looked underneath the sidewalk in the basement down here. I would definitely recommend not going to that area. You potentially might want to put it in your recorder's area back here, just a thought, if you haven't looked back there.
The elections area?
Yeah. I know there's room, well, I don't know that there's room, but there used to be a storage room in the back of that area with, I don't know, didn't have much on it for shelving, had shelving, but with not much on it, I don't know if that area could be utilized or not, but just thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Kenny. All right, any other citizen concerns? Okay. With that, any board concerns? If there's any?
I see supervisor Nelson didn't get the memo about Brown quarters this week.
I will work on that for next week, sorry, guys. Sorry, I let you down. I was just gonna say, we had the Farm Bureau meeting Thursday night, myself and supervisor Dietrich and Carper were there, as well as auditor Scaff, and K T I V was there for the media, which it actually had been quite a few years since we'd had any media out there, so I appreciate the coverage. There was good, good discussion, good updates, some of the, you know, it's kind of interesting, some of the things that we talked about in relation to House File seven eighteen were concerns of the board of directors and the members that were out there, because they don't want to see services that they have cut. And so, we're really in a tough spot, because our voters here have demanded certain things from us, and an elected body somewhere else has dictated that we have to ignore what they want. So, we'll continue to work through this budget cycle, but always appreciate that invite out there, they're great people, and if there's other groups that want to have us out, and I think we talked about having some rural meetings.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if we can do one or two this year, I think that'd be great, the lot in one was very well attended, and so those are great things to try to do, but anyway, it was a good, it was a good night, and appreciate everybody that came out and asked questions and participated, so, thank you.
All right. Not hearing anything else? All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.